Gardner is present. Alderman Clay is present. Alderman Martin is present. Alderman Manahopperworth is present. Alderman Haddon is present. And Alderman Silverstein is present, we have a quorum. Alderman Moore is present. Before we get started, I'm gonna ask everybody to respect the process today. I'm gonna ask everybody to respect the process today. And Alderman Spazado. How many people do we have? Can I get a motion by Alderman Spazado to let Alderman Curtis, Alderman Telferro, and Alderman Hall to attend this meeting by remote means by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call? So moved. Alderman Curtis, Telferro, and Hall are allowed to attend this meeting by remote means and will be added to the roll call used to determine quorum.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time, I've been informed that we have no public comments. And that concludes the public comment first period. The Resolution 2023-005108 referendum question regarding the public mental health clinic. There's a substitute for this item. Can I get a motion to accept the substitute? So moved by Alderman Dow. Okay. Alderman Hopkins is present. Go ahead, Alderman Lopez.
On the motion to accept the substitute, I object and ask for a roll call vote, not a matter.
We will now have a roll call to see whether we accept the motion to substitute or not, so let's do a roll call. You're voting yes to accept. This up to... I'm voting yes to accept. Okay, public. You have to allow to... Well, then, you're going to... I'm gonna ask the Sergeant at Arms to clear the room. Okay. So the substitute before you... The substitute before you... The substitute before you have a copy of it in front of you. And so the substitute is a referendum. So the substitute is before you. It's on your desk. Okay. If you just hold for just a minute, I'll make sure it was electronically sent to you. And she will make sure that you had one. I'm sorry, Alderman Beal, just give me a minute because we're in the middle of a roll call. After the roll call, I'll make sure. Okay, everybody, a yes is to accept the substitute and move forward, and a no is to deny the substitute the right. Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman Robinson. Alderman Yancy. Alderman Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Mitchum. Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Alderman Chico. Alderman Lee. Alderman Ramirez. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Gutierrez. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez. No. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman. It's a substitute to accept the substitute ordinance. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Woman Taylor. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarz. Alderman Scott. Alderman Secho Lopez. Alderman Fuentes. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irving. Alderman Telferro.
No.
Alderman Cruz. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagner's pack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Canusa. Alderman Lawson. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Woman Clay. Alderman Martin. Alderman Manahopperworth. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Mike, Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Twenty-eight, eighteen, no, the motion moves forward to accept the substitute. There's a no. Okay, Alderman Beal had a question? Yes. Alderman Beal had a question.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question that I have is, just the other day, we had a meeting where people that were voting remotely were not allowed to be counted as quorum, and you stated that they would be counted towards quorum. So which is it, people remotely can be or they can't be reported towards quorum?
I cannot speak to other meetings, I can speak to this one. But I can say that today, after you reach... After you reach... After you reach quorum, everybody who is remote is allowed to participate.
Well, I totally respect that, Madam Chairman, but can I get an opinion from Corporation Council?
Can the Corporation for Council please give an opinion?
Mark Siegel, Assistant Corporation Counsel. Though, I can't give a formal legal opinion, but I can tell you what the law states. What the law states is that remote members cannot be counted towards quorum, but may participate in the meeting provided that quorum has already been established.
Okay, so they cannot be counted towards quorum?
That's correct. There needs to be a quorum established before they are allowed to participate remotely.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. Secondly, you know, I'm just really, really perplexed that we have been actively trying to have a committee meeting and have dialogue and conversation about the ordinance to put the question of Sanctuary City on the ballot. And there's been... There's been an aggressive... An aggressive movement to prevent that from happening. And, you know, I mean, I... If we're gonna collaborate and work together and try to work things out, you know, my phone is always on, and nobody has ever called me and said, "Alderman Beal, can you come in and we can talk about that ordinance?" Nobody's ever called me. So I'm always willing to sit down and, you know, come up with a compromise. But you can't compromise with people who don't want to sit down and talk to you. Now, I did get a call at six-thirty last night from Jeff Levine asking me to talk about a substitute to the resolution. And I asked him to send it to me. He said, "Well, I can't send it to you, but I can read it to you." And I said, you know, "That doesn't do me any good." And I said, you know, "This is the twelfth hour, and now is not the time to try to negotiate without the person who sponsored the ordinance." And when you look at, you know, the ordinance, we have a numerous amount of sponsors on that ordinance, and we're all willing to sit down and collaborate. Because, you know, that's the word everybody likes to use nowadays. You know, we like to collaborate. And, you know, I'm always willing to do that. But you can't collaborate with people who don't want to collaborate with you. I think I'm a very reasonable person. I think I've, you know, negotiated and collaborated my entire career. And so to put this forward, to try to squeeze out the ordinance of Sanctuary City, I think is doing a disservice to this entire city. So... We would very much like to just... We would very much like to just have the people have a voice. The people have never had a voice on that particular ordinance or resolution. And we're spending a lot of money. We're spending a lot of money every single day. I think we're up to forty million a month now, ladies and gentlemen. We're up to forty million a month. And to shut people out from having a voice is not what this city's foundation was built on. At the same time, you're asking us to let the people have a voice on Bring Home Chicago. So you want that voice. But you don't want a voice on Sanctuary City. Now, the difference is, the Sanctuary City, you all, is a non-binding resolution. It's just a discussion. It's to hear what the people of Chicago are feeling and thinking. But when you don't want... When you don't want the people to hear you... When you don't want the people to have a voice, you have chaos is what you see going on. That's why you're seeing the chaos in this city. Because you're trying to silence a voice of certain people that just want to be heard. And so... And so my hope and thrust behind people here in this body is just give the people Chicago a voice, you all. Give the people a chance to say yes or no. And we don't... We don't want people to be disenfranchised. And so I think that's what this is doing. I think this is really throwing fuel on the fire. And to not talk to the people who sponsor the ordinance, I think is a disservice. And this is... This is part of the division that people are talking about. The division is not coming from the other side. The division is coming from inside. That's where the division's coming from. And so, ladies and gentlemen, if you all would just give the people a chance to say yes or no, that's all it is. And so I respectfully ask everybody to vote this ordinance down. Vote this ordinance down. And we can still today bring the Sanctuary City ordinance before this body by the majority of the members present to talk about it, put it on the ballot, and let the people decide what they want to do with their government. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, members of the Rules Committee.
Hold on, Alderman, so we can hear you. Excuse me. Let the Alderman have his say.
Again, thank you, Chairman, and yes, to the people in the gallery, we understand the frustration of public comment. But allow me to read what actually the substitute of this resolution states. The original dealt with whether or not the City of Chicago should open more mental health clinics. And considering that our mayor, Brandon Johnson, said that he was committed to opening more and was going to budget to doing more, there was no reason to even have this as a question. It was simply a tactic, as my colleague said, to squeeze out the original question that was proposed, "Shall Chicago remain a sanctuary city?" Now... Now, ladies and gentlemen, the substituted... The substitute question is as follows. "Should the City of Chicago impose reasonable limits on the cities providing resources for migrant sheltering, such as funding caps and shelter occupancy time limits, if necessary to prevent a substantial negative impact on Chicago's current residents?" That is the question.
Okay.
That is the question.
He has the right to be heard.
Oh, I don't think they're mad at me. But that is the question, Madam Chairman, and members of the committee, that we are now putting before... That we are discussing now, putting before the voters. Should we limit how much we spend? Which sets us up for the question that what happens when you reach the limit? What are you going to do when you say, "We've spent all the money we're willing to spend, and you still have buses arriving here?" This question does not answer the issue as to why people continue to be shipped to the City of Chicago. And they are shipped here because we remain unabashed and saying a welcoming city, a sanctuary city, even though Republicans and Democrats are now taking full advantage of that. Madam Chairman...
I... Okay.
Madam Chairman, I can continue louder.
We will clear the room, and if we can't get order...
Madam Chairman, I could say this. I too do not support this resolution because it automatically sets the City of Chicago up for failure. Again, we need to vote this down. We need a clean referendum that simply puts the question to all of Chicago. Shall we remain a sanctuary city? Because what we know, and what so many in this room fear, is that the true coalition between the African-American and Latino communities does exist around this question because both communities want an end to it. Both committees are being forced to house individuals while those that are proponents of this remain steadfast without a single migrant shelter in their communities. It is unacceptable that we continue down this path. Additionally, Madam Chairman, I need to clarify something. Every meeting at the behest of His Honor, I invoke Rule 59, which allows for remote participation of members. To be perfectly honest, it is not up to the chair or presiding officer whether or not individuals are allowed to participate. It is up to the majority of those present here physically to issue a motion to allow those individuals to participate and count towards quorum, which did not happen. So if we want their voices to be heard, we must first incorporate a motion to bring them into this meeting officially in accordance with Rule 59, because we do have a quorum of bodies here present. Their participation is only as a spectator up until this point unless we grant them permission otherwise.
They've been granted already, Alderman Lopez, by Alderman Dow. Is there other questions? Alderman Lapantana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What really gets me about this situation right now is about four weeks ago, we posed a simple question to be on the referendum. Simple question. Do you, as a resident of the City of Chicago, believe that we should remain a sanctuary city? It's a simple question. In imposing that question, when we put it together, we wanted to hear from them. We wanted to hear from everybody outside of City Hall. In four weeks, we've had everything done to keep this question off a referendum. Everything has been done, so much so that we took five roll call votes until enough of us weren't here or were pushed out of the room where this could not be put on as a referendum. The entire city's seen that happen. In three days, you created another question or a substitute question to our referendum. In three days! We wrote it, and we came in here, and we voted on to hear it or to have it submitted. We can't even get ours out of rules. We can't even get ours put to be talked about in these chambers.
Ladies and gentlemen, can I have your attention, please? Can I please have your attention? If you are planning on staying in the meeting, please have a seat. If you continue with disturbance, the room will be cleared. Please have a seat. I'm begging of you to please have a seat. This is the last warning.
This is the last warning. Ladies and gentlemen. I'm asking you one last time. Please don't continue to disturb this meeting. Please have a seat, receive the information that's being distributed, and keep your voices to a minimum. If I have to ask you again to cease and desist with noise, I will have you removed from the chamber. Thank you.
You second that motion? Because people don't even understand. Heather did a good explanation of it, man. I mean, excellent. Excellent.
No, it's literally just like the same question. They were supposed to be done with 50 degrees. And they're on 20 degrees.
I was like, what?
And I can't believe it. She's really quick. Typical. And obviously such a veteran, but... I think it's the attorneys.
It's the attorneys and it's the fear of if you put somebody on that jury, it's remorseable error.
We're gonna be there. It's gonna be like all weekend.
I was like, I have like pit stop to do on Thursday, so I was like, open state winter instead. And no one said, oh, I don't even think it's gonna be Friday.
It might be next week. It might be Monday.
Yeah, so like they're turning the Earth's Gales at Old Orchard into a downtown city. So I got three tickets. Exactly. So Patty and I are going. But like before that, I've got like pit stop. So I was just like, I just need to nope out that afternoon. Like that's all I want for my life.
That's Wednesday?
Thursday.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I feel like we're definitely still gonna be on.
And somebody was like, oh, I bet we'll have a verdict by the time the Sarah and party happens. I was like, oh, you sweet summer child. No.
I wouldn't be surprised if we're back in town.
Well, the judge has said that her calendar says they have to be done by Christmas.
Yeah.
Maybe she'll go full Judge Judy mode.
Yeah.
Alright. We are going to recess this meeting until Thursday at noon. Thank you.
No, breach problem can't.
Yeah. They just recessed until noon.
They hear you say Thursday.
What? Yeah, they hear you say Thursday. They said, oh, Heather? You have something outside of City Council?
For clarity, so that everybody could hear me. This meeting has been recessed until Thursday the 16th at noon. Can everybody here, can my coffee dog hear me?
Ladies and gentlemen, can I have your attention, please? Can I have your attention, please? Can I have your attention, please? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned until Thursday. At this time... I'm sorry, the meeting is recessed until Thursday. At this time, please exit through the back door. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit through the back door. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit through the back door.
I mean, aren't we verifying all things that I should know? It's just so weird. Come back, this Thursday afternoon. This is really nonsensical. Off the record, nonsensical. Like, because every previous year that I remember, that's how we would have done it.
Yes. He pushing the meeting decision, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room. Please exit through the back door. Ladies and gentlemen, can I have your attention one more time? If you are here for public comment for the city council, please move to the third floor. All others, please move to the third floor. Here for public comment, if you signed up for public comment, please go to the third floor. All others, please go to the third floor. Thank you.
I'm gonna talk to you.
Did they hug or not? Cool. Glad it was, it was a fine little us. Did you get it? What column?
Yeah, there was, uh, we don't have anything at one yet, but I'll be.
I'm gonna talk to y'all afterwards.
No, he said later.
Good morning. If you are in chambers, can you please log into your devices? If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand and let us know. Thank you.
Aldo is in the house. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman Robinson. Alderman Yancy. Alderman Hall, I mean Alderman Hall is going to be, uh, remote. Chair Harris is present. Alderman Bill is present. Alderman Chico is present. Alderman Lee is present. Alderman Ramirez is present. Alderman Quinn is present. Zardo is in the house. Alderman, Alderman Person Nugent is present. Alderman Person Vasquez is present. Alderman Person Tanusen is present. Alderman Person Lawson is present. Alderman Person Gardner is present. Alderman Person Clay is present. Alderman Person Martin is present. Alderman Person Manahopewolf is present. Alderman Person Hadden is present. And Alderman Person Silverstein is present. We have a forum. Alderman Moore is present. Before we get started, I'm gonna ask everybody to respect the process today. I'm gonna ask everybody to respect the process today. Can I get a motion by Alderman Spasado to let Alderman Curtis, Alderman, so moved by Alderman Dow? Okay. Alderman Hopkins is present.
Would not.
I don't know, I pulled some our website. She's not their seats, but they're, they're in a, um...
I'm alright.
Heather no father. It's your house.
Hi. I am.
No, 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 wait, wait. Don't say he's breaking. Just like that?
He sat back though, so he's making our copy. It would be a whole lot for me to. Really? You want another people line?
And, and my.
Mitch? I'm just gonna text you one more time. Yeah, that's on the left side. That's why I thought of.
Yeah, but they haven't told me anything.
Yeah. I got a few photographers in my. And I'm like. Why? It ain't no website. No. I'm saying. I just, we just don't need that juice.
Hi John. I'm alright, how are you? There were a bunch of people who were arrested at City Ball at the disturbance after the rules committee meeting. And I'm just looking for, you know, yes, how many, what they were charged with. Whether any of them were charged before this was asked, that, that sort of details. Alright. Yeah, I figured. Alright. Well, I mean, they had the rules committee and they were debating whether to put, uh, a measure on the ballot. Yeah.
How old are you guys? Oh, I like. Not here, no, thank you.
Uh, no. Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate it. Thanks much.
Yeah, I take.
Bye bye.
I know, I'm trying to keep all your help. Go, if you wanna go sit at that desk with the brush, you're not gonna text me, but you know what?
Oh, I find it.
She's begging me to say camera. Right?
J T Brown?
J I T U? They ain't playing no games.
I, 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 you are here.
One minute you over here, then I.
No worries.
Then that's when I'm like, I tell them.
When they start, I, I, I hang right here with you like that.
That's good. I tell them.
I'm not texting you anything, I was just standing here.
No, they forget enough.
I was trying to get that picture.
You gonna be here plenty more times this month.
Uh-oh.
You doing it, does it? Budget here?
No, when is the regular time?
This most, uh, middle, yeah. Fixing the beginning.
Yeah, I might have to come here. I got something to do. Yeah, if you're. You know, that's.
No, I usually work now. Well, I just gotta fix some work and stuff. Open up. Or tomorrow, sure.
Here comes the main.
So long.
Are you aware of these cameras here?
Don't panic.
If you wear those high boots, you'd be okay.
No, no. I started with the ponytail.
No pony today.
No ponytail.
No.
I should've done this sooner or not.
The council will come to your order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum, the quorum roll call is now open. Please use your e-device. If you need help, please raise your hand. The vote is now open. The vote is now open.
Present. Present.
I will now take a roll call vote, or a voice vote, for those who did not vote on the e-device. Alderwoman Pat Dow, Alderwoman Dow is present, Alderman Robinson, not present. Alderman Hall?
Present.
Oh, got you, Alderman Hall, I know you're eager, we got you. Um, Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez? Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderman Curtis is present. On remote. Alderman Sichu Lopez? Alderman Sichu Lopez is present, Alderman Talafaro? Not present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez? Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Spisato? Alderman Spisato is present. Alderman Robinson is present, I'm marking you, anyone else that stepped into chambers? Okay? The vote is now closed. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Uh, there are forty-five members that are, forty-six members that are present here, so we do have a quorum. Uh, there are three alders that wish to participate remotely, Alders Talafaro, Hall, and Curtis have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely, for reasons stated in Rule Fifty-Nine. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added for quorum? The chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez. It's been moved, um, to allow these three alders to participate remotely. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those who pay say, say nay, all those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the chair, um, the ayes have it, Madam Clerk, please mark those, uh, alders present who are participating remotely, um, to be part of the roll, the quorum roll call. Um, and with that, let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please remain standing for the invocation which we delivered today by Pastor, uh, Leverett, I'm sorry, Bryant of the First Timothy Missionary Baptist Church.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, we welcome you all to the chamber as we welcome God. Erbs in Horto says that this great city of Chicago dwells in the middle of a garden, and we pause to have conversation with God as Jesus does in the middle of the Garden of Gethsemane, so let us pray. God, we need you on this morning, this afternoon, we need your presence here. There are many opinions and many feelings that need to be dealt with, and we ask you, dear God, to speak to us all individually. So much confusion, oh God, we ask you to just clear everything up. From the confusing terms of Lower Raca Drive to the smooth picturesque ride of the Dusavo Lake Shore Drive, whether we're standing on the six corners of Wicker Park or Portis Park, we pray that you bless our city. As the citizens walk on the bubbling concretes of the West Side and K-Town, we pray that you make the ground straight. While we brace ourselves as we drive over the streets of crumbling asphalt, we pray that you hold our cars together that we may be able to get throughout the upcoming brutal winter months. Even as we endure the never-ending construction projects that forces us to leave out fifteen minutes earlier, we thank you for the jobs that they provide. So bless us, oh God, bless this city, bless Austin, bless Bridgeport, Pilsen, the Wild Hunt, where Roseland, Chinatown, South Shore, Uptown, Chatham, Bronzeville, Urban Park, Ashburn, Beverly, West Pullman, we pray, God, that you make a change in this city. And more so, God, we pray that you make a change for the Chicago Bulls and the Chicago Bears, that we may have something to celebrate. And God, we need you to bring your angels of peace in this chamber. Instruct these here, these leaders that have been elected for our communities to be examples of dignity, morals, and ethics. Reveal the best plan that works for the migrants and the homeless community. Reveal a policy that funds the schools and the police department. Reveal a roadmap that leads this city to be the best version of itself as the world watches. Let it declare that this great city of Chicago, let the world declare that we got it right because we submitted to our ethics, let the world declare that we got it right because we yielded to your love. So cover our mayor and his family, grant him wisdom in the face of confusion, clarity in the face of distractions, and we submit this prayer in the matchless name of your son, Jesus, to Christ with thanksgiving, amen.
Amen. May be seated. Thank you Pastor for that prayer and for naming all the neighborhoods that I've been rumored to move to. At this point, we will take public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to, to three minutes, speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be pub, posted and made public available for automatic review. The first speaker is George Blakemore.
You help me, number one, where you can steal my minutes. Manipulate my minutes. Anyway, I heard something through the Great Vail Note, through public radio and TV, say the most racist city, Dr. King said, was the city of Chicago. The most corrupt city in America. On the news I heard was the city of Chicago. Something is wrong, if the city is racist and if the city is corrupt, something is wrong with the people. Something is wrong with the people here to let this go on. Now, that saga between immigrants and this, this Hispanic rose up, did you know? That, you know what that means? When you hit somebody, well, that's a felony. When you're pulling on somebody, we need zero tolerance when our elected officials decide to, to, to do that. He doesn't deserve any to be on this. You appointed him as a foreleader, so I hold you responsible too, 'cause you didn't know what you was doing. You didn't know what you, yeah, Chicago is disgraceful. Illegal immigrants are coming in. Illegal. And you know why they coming? To place the native blacks. A sanctuary, anybody that needs sanctuary is black people. We need this. If something wrong with us black people. Get rid of all of these black Altima. We got black faces in high places, but they don't represent black people. On the plantation, you know what the white man made? He didn't make a strong black man, and some of you all still have a plantation mentality. You, all of y'all, now you, oh, you let that race, you the Paul Allen, I didn't vote for. Brandon Johnson, I didn't vote for, 'cause I know neither one of them wasn't about nothing. And nothing from nothing lead nothing. The most racist city, Dr. King said, and on the news they say, the most corrupt city of all the cities is the city of Chicago, is that my kind of town? No. No. The black lives now are here, no. So the system is broke. The system is broke. The white ones are not a piece of nothing, the black ones, the Hispanics, the Asians, all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Norma Rios Sierra. Norma Rios Sierra.
Not present, not present.
Not present, okay. Isabel Dobel.
My name's Izzy Dobel, I'm the political director for the Chicago Federation of Labor. The Chicago Federation of Labor is the umbrella organization for Chicago and Cook County's labor unions, from airline pilots to zookeepers. The Chicago Federation of Labor's three hundred affiliated unions and their half a million members represent a diverse group of workers throughout the area. As the CFO, we fight for the hard-working people of Chicago, from baristas to laborers to healthcare workers. We fight to uplift the working families in our city. I am speaking in support of the paid time off ordinance before you today. This ordinance would remove the barriers for working people to take necessary time off to do whatever they need. Nationally, for the bottom ten percent of workers, people who make fifteen dollars an hour and below, sixty-two of them, sixty-two percent do not have access to paid days off. These workers are working many times more than forty hours a week and working multiple jobs. When a situation arises, workers are often faced with the decision of taking a day off or making their bills. This is very personal to me and my family, many of whom are low-wage workers and miss out on family events, rest, and even holidays because they cannot afford to miss a day's pay. In a sharp contrast to low-wage workers, ninety-three percent of the top fifty percent of workers, people who make over fifty-three thousand dollars a year, have access to paid time off. I want to be clear, this ordinance directly uplifts working people and closes the gap for the lowest-paid earners and strengthens the mid, middle class. This policy will help improve the lives of working people in our city, and it's a choice this chamber gets to make. Chicago is a pro-worker city. Our workers are the pillars that make our city stand, they deserve a day off for any purpose. This ordinance is a further expansion of the initiative to make the workplace more equitable, accessible, and pro-worker for all. We hope the coun, we see the council pass this ordinance today and continue the fight for justice for all workers, thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Kata Truss.
I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Go ahead, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, I was waiting on your go-ahead. Good morning, my name is Kata Truss, and I am here on behalf of not just the Austin community, but also black residents of the city of Chicago. And one of the things that we saw in city hall chambers on today, as well as on Thursday, was the misuse of power. What we saw was people being discriminated against. We saw voters, big, people get, be disenfranchised for the right to vote on something that they felt we needed to have a referendum on. So I stand here today saying that there is a division in this city, and it is being caused by our elected officials for not standing up for the black citizens of this city. I've seen people walking around with shirts on that says Bring Chicago Home, and that's really about people who are not from here. But what about the people who are at home, here in Chicago? Our mayor went to fight for billions of dollars for migrants. Who's going to fight for monies for the black community? Who has been melted out time after time? What we're saying to you is, we are tired. I don't know if you're gonna continue to disenfranchise us, continue to not hear us, continue to pretend that our voices don't matter, but what we're saying to you when we show up today in numbers, we're saying that you're not going to continue to ignore us. You're not going to continue to pretend like our voices don't count. We are here today to tell you that not only do we count, we're not only here to say it, but we are here to show it. While you guys are building coalitions within city council to help out people who don't live here, you better be building coalitions to help out the people who aren't here. Because we are certainly building coalitions for ourselves. Because, see, we see that you don't have our voice. We see that because Amoson Park is still closed and there are no services being provided there, our seniors are still out of their park. And I say to our mayor, who knows me personally and knows that I have been advocating for parks for the last thirty-five years, why you would think that it would be okay for you to attempt to put migrants in my park and not have a conversation with me is beyond me, I don't understand it. But I say to you and every other elected official, you better start talking to your people. Thank you.
Thank you, next up is Howard Ray.
Hello, my name is Howard Ray, I'm from the West Side of Chicago, I don't live too far from the mayor currently. How you doing, Mayor? Uh, these are questions, yes and no, and for the rest of the aldermen, I sent out emails to you guys under C W H P C C at gmail dot com. And these questions are, one, are you, what's your priority, is your priority?
Sir, sorry, there's, this is just public comment, it's only for comments, no questions at this time, just public comment.
Well, I can ask a question though, but, so the question is, what is your priority? Is your priority to house a migrant? I think we know what your answer is. The second question is, your priority to get the demands and wants of the black community and advocate for those? And the other questions are this, we've been, the other statement is this, we've been canvassing the whole Chicago land area, west side, south side, east side, and what we came up with is that a lot of people are fearing that putting the migrants in the neighborhood is gonna cause a civil war. And it's because they're scared of possible diseases that could be brought in, they're scared of possible, uh, uh, criminal elements that could be brought in. So what we're asking is to put the migrants at the McCormick Place and the CCDOC. Now, the CCDOC is a, is the former, uh, boot camp, uh, place where you can house almost seven thousand people. Now, the thing is, it's up to you, Mayor, to talk to your old, your old boss, uh, uh, Preckwickle, County President Preckwickle, ask her, can we use those divisions? Because at the CP, at the Twenty-Sixth Calabria, there's a lot of, uh, jail cells that's not being used. So, the other thing is this, why do we have to have a referendum when we could vote, vote today on to end a sanctuary city? Referendum to me is a, is a, is a, is a, is a time to waste, because even with the referendum, we still, it still doesn't hold any teeth. But if you use your executive power or the alderman, use this to bu, use this on a budget, if, if, if the alderman say we wanna earmark this with the budget, then we should earmark with this a budget. So, forget about the referendum. And the other thing is, what I got, fifty-six, yeah, Mayor, Mayor, hold on, yeah, Mayor, hold on. But if you could nod your head, if you could nod your head, would the CCDOC and the McCormick Place be good? Because there we can quarantine the people and get the medical, uh, uh, help as far as, uh, vaccination, and then we can fingerprint them. Yeah, I know, I know. Alright, so, it ain't over yet, hold on. So, so, there's some people that want me to ask this. It says Article Four, Section Four, the Constitution requires government to protect... It says Article Four, Section Four, the Constitution requires government to protect and defend our borders. If government does not, the Constitution by virtue of the name, part here, authorized the free citizen to defend themselves and their state in place of treason government. No, it's not.
Thank you so much, sir, your time has expired. The next up speaker is Andre Smith.
How you doing, my name is Andre Smith. As Democrats, we talk about the Republicans suppressing the vote. That's exactly what we done today. Democrats suppressed other Democrats' votes and from voting against sanctuary city. We have a right as legal citizens in Chicago to vote whether we want a sanctuary city or not. You cannot suppress nor deny our vote. You must put it to the floor and allow us, and put it in a referendum, and allow us as residents, the same residents that voted for you to be representing us. Now, 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 number two, number two, number two. Alderman Sarosa. Or Rosarosa, or whatever your name. You really don't even deserve a name at this point. If you are truly, truly sorry, and you really, really wanna be forgiven, show us your text message before the assault and after the assault. Show us the text messages. That, because there had to be a plan for you to do what you had to do. And now that I'm tired, since you have conversations on your cell phone and that's part of public, um, we can, we can, we, public records, show us your texts before the assault and after the assault, thank you.
Next up, the next speaker is Antonio Gutierrez. Antonio Gutierrez.
Antonio Gutierrez is not present.
Next speaker is Rashad Priak.
Okay, attention Mayor. Chicago should not remain a sanctuary city. I yield my time.
Okay, next speaker is Mama Evangel Yaw Banubin. Go ahead.
Evangel. Mama De Evangel Yaw Nubian, hallelujah greetings. As a crimes against humanity descendant, Jim Crow genocide survivor, and member of untreated hard mind and subjugated race poverty damage, it is, uh, it is written in the Black History Bible book whose hero is a woolly haired man with bronze colored feet to match his bronze colored face, that love thy neighbor as thyself, not love thy neighbor instead of thyself. That's twisted. Therefore, I stand in opposition of the non-binary sanctuary referendum because it is a stalling technique. Waiting until March will allow a hundred and fifty thousand more sanctuary asylum seekers to join the millions of sanctuary settlers that are already here committing the perfect crime. Buying homes from American citizens and voting by mail, uh, using their name committing the perfect crime of identity theft. Mayor Washington started the sanctuary status welcoming. Mayor Brandon can stop it with an executive order. If city council started it, city council can vote to stop it. Therefore, my, um, they can, they can stop it. Uh, and, and they should, uh, stop it and keep Chicago from being ruined like New York because of this sanctuary targeted. The only thing that should be done, that referendum, should be a referendum for the people to recall any elected official that is not impeachable because, uh, not, uh, uh, because we elected them. And if they're not representing us, we should be able to fire them. They are in violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. You have the power to stop the sanctuary targeted. Why don't you use it?
Thank you, we have one virtual speaker today, Brad Tietz. Brad, press star six to unmute, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Brad Tietz, Vice President of Government Relations and Strategy with the Chicagoland Chamber of Commerce. We urge you to oppose the paid leave ordinance before you. Let us get back to the negotiating table and support a balanced paid leave policy that is fair for both workers and businesses. I've said it before and I'll say it again, the business community truly understands that there is a need for balance when it comes to paid leave policies. It's why the chamber and other business groups came to the table on the new state law. And it's why we've been committed to reaching a compromise throughout these negotiations that is fair for both Chicago workers and businesses. But there is no need to rush this and get it wrong. Every part of the business and labor negotiations over the last four weeks and nearly every provision contained in the ordinance before you meets or exceeds the new state paid leave requirement and could be enacted after January one, twenty twenty-four. Again, there is no need to rush this. Yet, even amid growing calls to delay the effective date of the new state law, as the Illinois Department of Labor has struggled to finalize new state rules because paid leave policy is complicated and it's not just about the number of days, proponents of the, uh, of the paid leave proposal are determined to force small businesses, the very backbones of your communities, to comply with what will be the most expensive and complicated form of paid leave required in the country in just eight weeks. It is a terribly drafted ordinance and coupled with a full private right of action, businesses, particularly those with, without large HR departments, will face lawsuits for innocent mistakes effective January one, twenty twenty-four. The supposed lawsuit delay is all smoke and mirrors, and we urge you to carefully read the language. I also don't know if you caught the committee hearing on the ordinance, but the city officials cannot even answer the most basic of questions related to the policy and implementation. As written, the proposal before you exposed businesses of all sizes, for-profit, nonprofit, state-based organizations, StacyNet hospitals, and so many other critical anchors of our community to costly lawsuits for minor infractions, and it does not include reasonable administrative and care processes to occur before a lawsuit is filed. It fails to adequately protect small business, small neighborhood businesses by not providing for a full small business carve-out. It contains costly and administratively burdensome unused PTO payout provisions that are not required anywhere else in the country, including Illinois, New York City, and Los Angeles. And it sends a terrible signal to our airlines, one of our most important economic engines, that the city does not have their back while guaranteeing litigation between the airlines and the city by not allowing for the same exemption they have in state law. There are so many other areas I could raise, given how poorly drafted the language is, but I'm not allowed at that time. We urge you to read the definition of covered employee, for instance, and what it might mean for our convention and travel industry. This has been an incredibly flawed process from the start that has led to an incredibly flawed product that will lead to job losses, less economic development in the communities that need it most, and frivolous lawsuits filed against businesses of all sizes. Thank you for your time.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much, this concludes the public comment period. Chair recognizes alderwoman Miss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise on a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you. Today, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm going to take a high role of committed public service in responding to the news of the Thirty-Fifth Ward Alderman resignation from the City Council leadership post. Thank goodness that this unfortunate, negative, highly uncomfortable, and unwanted incident, which was perpetuated against me by my fellow colleague, Alderman Rosa, during the special city council meeting at City Hall on Thursday, November the second, has come to a resolution. However, here are some facts that I want to share with you at this time. At nine forty-nine AM, I was sent a text from my floor leader advising me to stay away from the council meeting, which went to my cellphone. However, I didn't see the message as I was driving in my car on the way to City Hall. My public servant's goal has always been to continue to be a servant and representative of my thirty-seven ward constituents, and I resolute, committed to attending the special city council meeting. Number one, my text message were it. Good morning, Emma. I want to let you know that today's special meeting would not have a quan. So if you have things to do in your ward, focus on that, instead of wasting time coming downtown. Like wow, but I'm already here. So when we had the first roll call, first roll call quan as I came in, our floor leader Rosa came over to me and he says, do you know that the migrants get offended when they hear you all talking about them like that? Hold on. I replied to floor leader Rosa, my community get offended when our resources are being driven and taken away from us because of this issue. That was our first roll call quan. As the, the council got in a disarray and legislation was being tried to maneuver, there was a second roll call. The second roll call, Chairman Rosa told me afterward, he said, you know, you shouldn't be in here. I said, well, why are you bothering me? He says, because the rest of your colleagues are idiots. I said, well, he said, you're a chairman. And I'm feeling as though, yes, I'm a chairman, but I'm also representing my community, which is why I'm here. And if you're gonna take, I told you where you could put that chairmanship. Because I'm here to represent my community, no one ever stands in the way of that in the twenty-four years I've serviced my constituents. I also referred to you, there were Chairman Irvin sitting there, he's a chairman. But nothing was said about that. In between the chaos and the maneuver of the meeting, there was a meeting held for capital improvement economics in two oh one eight, which I was a member of, so we went to go to the meeting. As they recessed the special city council meeting because there was confusion of getting a quan back and forth. And as we were conducting Ecom meeting, someone came in and said they need a roll call again. So everybody leaves out of that particular meeting to come back into city council. I happened I had to be the last one to come in that door. And I don't know what video and media showing, but I came into contact with just Alderman Rosa and myself there. And he says, you can't go into this meeting. Now, I don't know what manhaling and how people said it, but it was more of, you can't go into this meeting. Where I was literally blocked at that door with, not manhaling, I don't call it, but more or less you can't go into this meeting, facing me. Alderman Coleman came out and she happened to see this incident. And for whatever reason, I saw Alderman Lopez come out because I couldn't go in, as you have stated. Then he moved me out of the way so that I could come into the council chamber. Now, I'm already exhausted from all the things you're telling me regarding my colleagues. I take that stuff seriously. I don't call people idiots, never would. Nor would I tell someone about a position of chairman. I've been in this council twenty-four years. I am sixty-eight years old. I have seen a lot in my lifetime of a struggle. And Alderman Rosa. Learn a little wisdom. Always take the high road, you don't have to. Cause we have a, you have said, we have a judicial obligation coming to me. Me and you have sit here and talked about a special council meeting, I'm doing my judicial duties. And when you're doing your judicial duties, I told you I was doing mine and representing my community. I have to hear it from them every day, every single day. And if I had not came here, then they wanna know where am I? I would be getting protested against. Do you realize that? So to have me to be put upon that strain, I felt like I was back in the South. I felt like everything in me was shaking and I literally tried to share, but seemed like no one would hear it, but my colleagues. And I thanked them because I had a little bit of hope that I could stand. At that point, I really didn't know if I could do my job again. I didn't. Except if this what I have to pull up with, if this what women's have to put up with, somebody would have to stand up for not only me, but any young women's who get abused. That's the problem with Black women's today. And I'm a strong Black woman. Strong Black woman. That believe in fairness. To have faith, to work out your differences, agree and disagree, but have respect. And I could read this whole statement, but I'll pass it to the media and just let them see. I wanted to talk about the highlights and how I felt because I took two or three days. Good that I emotional mentally, but I prayed to the Lord to give me the strength that I could be able to come here and look at you and tell you exactly what happened. It was an becoming of anyone who's elected to represent people. Cause if it happens to me, then who else can it happen to? Or who else have already? And they didn't have a voice, so I'm speaking that voice for everyone. That you shouldn't be talked to, dismissed, or de-minimized. No one way, never let your position take over you. You make the position, the position don't make you. Never. Never. We have titles. No one respect us until we work our titles. And that's what this is all about, putting in the work, developing relationships with our colleagues so that we can understand, not a test. We have to develop these relationships. We are an example for this entire, not only the city, but for the country. And we should not be taking time, taxpayer dollars dealing with this right now. We should be about the business of this city. But however, we're here. There's some dark days ahead, as Dr. Martin Luther King said. And we're going down some dark days. And it's not something that I want, it's something that I have a vision and I saw it coming. I saw this coming. But until we get some law and order in here tonight and start respecting each other, then we will be having even more darker days ahead. But Mr. President, having said that, I appreciate you allowing me to be able to speak this morning because there was a time I couldn't speak. So I really felt what women's go through, in particular these women's of color, that don't have a voice, I am that voice for them today. Every woman should be respected. No one should overexert their power or their authority on them because they can't. It's unacceptable. And I pray that this council, that we can come together. And thank you. You did apologize this morning to me, first time we talked. And I will tell you this. Action always speaks louder than words. Apology is good, but you gotta have some action behind it. And I'm looking for the action moving forward. That no retaliation, no one has a right to retaliate because one speaks their mind, no one. And I'm certainly here as one. And I'm willing to work along with you because we have to represent all the peoples in Chicago. I don't want to device the city. There's enough going on now. But we are leaders and we have a obligation, our community have elected us to represent, and we have to demonstrate that far above board. So let me say thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for taking my time to allow me to speak.
Thank you.
The chair still recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you. I did forget. You see, my colleagues, I had so much love from everyone, I could not even begin to take the calls, from every sector of the city, from the ministry to the federation, to public servant, to the state, from the governor's office, every religious leaders, all crowds of citizens, organization, just everyone rallying their support. And I want to say thank you because it gave me that encouragement that I can move forward. You don't, you're not alone. But this should never happen again, just never, never happen again. And I want to say thank you, thank you, and to every one of you. You've been more than, more than grateful showing the respect as a leader that one should receive. Remember, I did not know how to go forward. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Mr. President, I rise to apologize to my colleague Alderwoman Emma Metz, to all of my colleagues, to this council for my actions last week Thursday. Thursday's special meeting was chaotic, tensions were high, I dramatically overreacted to the intensity of what was happening in that meeting, and there's no excuse for that. I sincerely apologize to you, my colleague Alderwoman Emma Metz, for the disrespectful interaction that we had outside of council chambers and for my overzealous attempts throughout the day to try and convince you not to be part of a quorum. I should have never done that to you, I should have never put you in that position. I also apologize to Alderwoman Nicole Lee, Alderman Felix Cardona, Alderman Chris Saliaferro, Alderman Desmond Yancy for my disrespectful words and actions. I'm deeply sorry. I apologize to the entire city council for my actions last week Thursday. And I apologize to our mayor for letting you down in my leadership post. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Please, please, thank you very much.
I feel awful about everything that happened and the role that I played in everything that occurred last week. Our Chicago City Council does important work, and even when we strongly disagree with each other on policy approach, it is critical that we show each other respect. The people of Chicago deserve nothing less and have every right to demand that of all of us. I cannot take away the mistakes I made last week, but I hope to be able to rebuild the trust that we have in each other as we move forward as a council that addresses the important things impacting the city of Chicago. I commit myself to do the work, to do the actions. I commit myself in front of you, my colleagues today, to work hard every day moving forward to strengthen the relationships that we have. I'm going to make amends. I'm going to work every single day to make sure that we're becoming a stronger council. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions? We have no resolutions.
I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the city council the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Funding loan notification of City Chicago multifamily housing revenue note in series twenty twenty-three Grace Manor Apartments project, and a report of Department of Transportation regarding a non-ordinance loading zone activities. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the city council that all those matters were considered by the city council at the regular meeting held on November first, twenty twenty-three, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies in the journal proceeding to City Council of Chicago. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications for the mayor and other city
Thank you very much. Committee reports, the chair recognizes Finance Chairperson Dowell.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the city council. Reporting for the City Council Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on November sixth, the following items received, they do pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the authority to approve the levy of real estate taxes for the city of Chicago for the year twenty twenty-four in the amount of one billion, seven hundred and seventy-three million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Mr. President, Alderman Irvin joins me in moving to defer and publish this item.
Thank you.
Item number two is a substitute ordinance concerning the amendment of municipal code titles two, three, nine, eleven, and fourteen, which relates to the revenue derived from certain taxes, fines, and fees. Alderman Irvin joins me in moving to defer and publish this item as well.
Thank you very much.
This includes my report, Mr.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Budget Chair Chairman Irvin, Committee on Budget and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council, reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on November sixth. Chairwoman Dowell and I move to defer and publish the following items. Item number one, a series of proposed corrections and revisions to the twenty twenty-four budget recommend, uh, recommendations as amended. Item number two, the adoption of the annual appropriation ordinance for year twenty twenty-four. Item number three, amendment of regulations governing administration and classification plan and employee benefits for classified positions set forth in the annual appropriation ordinance regarding salary schedules, automobile allowances, holidays, vacation, and sick leave. Item number four, expenditure portion of motorfield tax funds allocated to the city of Chicago for year twenty twenty-four. Item number five, expenditure portion of motorfield tax funds allocated to the city of Chicago for year twenty twenty-four for CTA. Item number six, amendment to the municipal code titles two, three, four, six, seven, nine, and ten, the twenty twenty-four municipal code corrections ordinance. And item number seven, amendment to the municipal code titles one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and eighteen, the twenty twenty-four municipal code management ordinance. Alderman Dowell and I would like to defer and publish all seven of those items.
Very well, thank you.
Item number eight is an annual appropriation ordinance, year twenty twenty-three amendment within Fund nine two five. Mr. President, I move passage by roll call vote.
Very good, thank you very much.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please hit refresh and submit your vote. The voting is open. e-device. Alderman Robinson, not present. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Hall, just going to you one more time. Okay, the voting is now closed.
Thank you very much. There are forty-seven yays, zero nays. This matter has passed. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell for motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Gutierrez.
My apologies, I would like to give her a yes vote.
Madam Clerk, would you please add Alderwoman Gutierrez as a yes vote, as an aye vote for the last item?
Yes, we'll add her to the record.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number nine is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight for year twenty twenty-three. I move passage by the same roll call previously applied to item number eight on the Budget Committee Report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number ten is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Committees and Rules for year twenty twenty-three. I move passage by the same roll call vote previously applied to item number eight on the Budget Committee Report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for Committee on Committees and... Oh, that's right. Thank you for Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hatton.
Mr. President and members of the city council, reporting for your Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a committee meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-three. The committee had three reports and recommends passage of the following items. Item one is ordinance twenty twenty-three, zero 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 four nine three nine, an amendment of municipal code eleven dash four regarding radiation monitoring to remove the carnitite moratorium area. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Budget and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item two is substitute ordinance, SO twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one two four three, amendment of municipal code titles two, eight, and eleven regarding administration of private hauling complaints. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Budget and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item three is R O twenty twenty-three, zero 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 four five six six, calling for hearings on a proposed rate hikes by People's Gas Company. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Budget and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
You know, Alder, Chairwoman, could you just clarify that last item number? Just want to make sure that that is read into the record. R, item number three.
We've got R twenty twenty-three, zero 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 four five seven seven, my apologies.
Get that corrected, thank you very much. Committee on Workforce Development, the chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Mr. President and members of the city council, reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and reconvened on November second. There was one item on the agenda, Chicago Pay Leave and Paid Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance. At the meeting, a substitute ordinance was adopted, SO two zero two three dash zero 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 two nine eight zero. The substitute ordinance was passed out of committee by a vote of thirteen to two of the members present. I hereby move for a roll call vote on the Chicago Pay Leave and Paid Sick Ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Hopkins.
Just a second, I want to make sure your mic is...
Thank, thank you, Chairman. Alderman Hopkins, Beal and I move to defer and publish this item.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Very well. This concludes the report of the Committee on Workforce Development.
All right, very good, thank you very much. I believe that was the last committee report, thank you. Agreed upon calendar. Matters on the agreed upon calendar, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received from Clerk Andrea M. Valencia total of eight items proposed of the agreed calendar, consisting of contributory commemorative and tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia and from the following alderpersons. Alderperson Robinson, alderperson O'Shea, alderperson Talafaro, alderperson Wackespack, alderperson Viegas, alderperson Vasquez, and alderperson Silverstein. I move these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution that just passed in the omnibus, what, excuse me, I'd like to suspend the rules. The resolution that just passed in the omnibus.
I think we have to get a so moved on that.
Yes, to suspend the rules, so moved. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution that just passed out of the Committee on Rules in the omnibus talks to... talks to the long history that Chicago has with Bulgaria. And in the chambers today, we have the Council General from Bulgaria, and I'd like to see if we can acknowledge him and the hard work that he's done. Council General Vetoslav Stanikov is in the building.
Is it okay from this body to have leave to recognize this gentleman? Is that okay, body? All right, leave has been granted. That is a very fine colored tie there. Let's please give him a nice Chicago welcome. Thank you very much. Are there any other orders that wish to be recognized? There's a motion to pass this in the omnibus. Hearing no objections, seeing no other hands, so ordered. New business. The clerk, do we have... Yes, we do. All right, very well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Alderman Beal has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2.173, repealing in its entirety, refer to the Committee on Immigrant Rights. Alderman Beal has an ordinance, has a proposed ordinance, referring to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate for the construction of affordable family homes by Hope Center Foundation. Alderman Low... Alderman Quinn has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2.173 by repealing it in its entirety, recommended to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Lopez has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2.173, repealing it in its entirety, refer to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Moore has a proposed ordinance amending 2024 budget recommendations regarding grant to Chicago Park District for development of Fieldhouse at Ogden Park, referred to the Committee on Budget. Alderman Tabarez has a proposed ordinance designating various precincts of the 23rd Ward as restricted residential zones, prohibiting shared housing and vacation rentals recommended to the Committee on License. Alderman Tabarez has a proposed ordinance designating the 8th precinct of the 23rd Ward as a restricted cannabis zone, referred to the Committee on License. Alderman Tabarez has a proposed ordinance repealing municipal code chapter 2.173 in its entirety, refer to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Viegas and others has a proposed ordinance directing the Superintendent of Police to rescind and reissue Chicago Police Department General Order G-03-03-1, Emergency Vehicle Operations with Clear Pursuit Guidelines, referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman Spazado has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2.173 by repealing it in its entirety, refer to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Napolitano has a proposed ordinance introducing an amendment of the municipal code chapter 2.173, repealing it in its entirety to the Committee on Safety. Alderman Riley has a proposed ordinance introducing a municipal code agreement to repeal chapter 2.173 in its entirety, refer to the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that is the conclusion of new business.
Thank you very much. For the approval of the journal, Alderman Mitchell, for the approval of the journal.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journal from the November 1st, 2023 regular meeting, and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And for unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I am aware of three items of unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business was filed by Alderwoman Haddon and calls for a vote on R-2023-0004166, which was deferred and published on November 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Alderman Hall has his hand raised. The chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Mr. President, I ask to be added as a yes on the roll call vote of the eighth item in budget and the subsequent papers.
Very good. For the first favorable item, please add Alderman Hall as an aye vote. Madam Clerk, thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. We are looking to take a vote on this item today. So many of you know, we passed this through committee. We've been working on the Bring Chicago Home ordinance for a long time. I want to remind folks just what it is. We're looking to put a referendum question on the ballot for our voters to tell us whether they think we should make changes, including some decreases and increases to the real estate transfer tax, so that we can create a dedicated source of funds to help Chicagoans experiencing homelessness and to prevent homelessness. So, Mr. President, I move passage of this item, unless others would like to speak on it. I see a hand.
Very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
I know it's dumb.
Did I get that right? Alderman Robinson, my apologies. That's embarrassing.
Mr. President, I would like to be recorded as a yes on item eight on the Budget Committee Report. Thank you.
Very good. Clerk, please add Alderman Robinson as a yes vote on the first favorable item. Now, the chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank my colleague Maria Haddon for her work on this. When she first brought it to me, I was immediately signed on because I know that we have to help our homeless population. But as we got deeper into this, and this but does not go without me supporting this to put on the ballot, but there's some things we have to do as we come back to council on this because it's just a, right now, an opportunity for the people to hear. But although we made financial implications in this, and it was, as I exhausted this at the last committee meeting, we learned that we had to do something by state statute and put an amount in there because I was asking why do we have to put money in there. So as I stand to support it, I am still, like, a little not happy about that we made a decrease in this and we had to, and we put that into the ordinance. The decrease by statute didn't have to go into the ordinance. If our focus is on getting money for the homeless, then we shouldn't have been decreasing anything. And as I talk to realtors, specifically the ones from my community, wouldn't have made an impact, does not make much of an impact anyhow. And they are concerned more about this ordinance helping the homeless than them having that cut. I also was concerned about the impact that it would have on investments in communities like Inglewood, like Auburn Gresham, like Chicago Long. After having conversations with several people, including probably the only African woman who owns a title company, and she has both an interest in this in terms of closings as well as an investor, I was comfortable with her comments and things that she talked about to saying, David, this is fair. But it's only fair, Alderman, if it's going to help the people, if it's going to get directly to the homeless people in Chicago. As I began to talk to other people in the housing space, other professionals, I was disturbed to find out there was national organizations and activists pushing this ordinance and making sure that monies that we got did not go towards shelters. This money has to go towards shelters as well. And so, when I hear people talking those things who are in the room, and our thing in Chicago, we cannot let national people push what Chicago does. And so it's important that this money goes to not only shelters, but also to making sure that we house people. And whatever committee that we're having and that's being set up, should the people of Chicago vote on this, I want to make sure that I'm sitting on that committee. The other thing that I want to talk about in all of this, and, Mr. President, it's important. I know we're not voting and we didn't pass the CPI. A lot of decisions that was made with us, Bring Chicago Home or other things, was tied to that CPI. And so the fact that we do not have the CPI in this budget is a problem because it's going to create more problems, you all. And at the end of the day, when we kicking the can down the road, other people are going to come back. When we have to raise taxes by $500 and $600 million, are going to be hurt. The other part I'm not hearing is, when we talk about that impacts this, is the downtown area. The previous administration had a plan to make sure that we revitalize the LaSalle corridor. What I'm hearing, that may be impacted. What I'm hearing, and I believe in taking TIP dollars when it's necessary, but when there was a plan to revitalize that downtown area so we can have the money in downtown to help our homeless, to create investment, when I see that in jeopardy, I see that as a problem as well. And also, the timing of this. Sometimes, when you're in good times, I remember under the Emanuel administration when this was brought up as well, which we were in good times. Understand that a lot of our developers in downtown and even in our neighborhoods, properties are hurting. But we're going to leave this question to the people. And whatever the people decide, if they decide yes, then I definitely want to make sure I'm in that room on any committee when decisions are being made about how this money is being applied. Not outside organizations, but the people in this council. Thank you so much. And Alder Maria Haddon, I commend you on your work on this, the way you handled yourself, anywhere the people agree to disagree, and how you got information out. And I stand in support of this with those items that I talked about to make sure that we're looking at as we move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Rule 33 of the City Council Rules of Order, I move to accept a substitute ordinance for SO 2023-0005042 that was circulated by the Sergeant-at-Arms by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance. The substitute simply provides that on or before October 31st, 2024, the city must donate the subject property to the Far South Community Development Corporation for the redevelopment as the proposed Morgan Park Commons. Any other sale, lease, or disposition of the property will require City Council approval.
So, thank you, Alder. So, you're just a little ahead of me a little bit? That's okay. So, I'm going to say that that is out of order, but we will get to that, I promise you. So are there any other orders that wish to speak to the initial motion? Okay, thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
You all are in luck. I broke my microphone. All right.
Annual Appropriation Ordinance. E-vote application to record your vote at this time.
We should be finding ways to address homelessness in the city of Chicago. I know, even under the last administration, I sat in this room with my colleague when a special meeting was called and the then-mayor left, as did twenty-plus members to prevent quorum for a special meeting. My, how nothing's changed. But I do know, what also hasn't changed is the fact that we still have thousands of people who are homeless on the streets of Chicago. We have veterans, as we talked about, we worked to connect. We have migrants who are now sleeping. But we have, at any given day, nearly 7,000 people on Lower Whacker Drive, on bus shelters, platforms, in our alleys. Absolutely, we should help them. And many of us...